Yep, I'm just going.
Okay. Alright, the meeting will come to order. Um, for public information, a copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the, uh, meeting room on the east wall, if anyone needs to see that. We'll have roll call.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Okay, we can stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um... So, I'm gonna dispense with my normal announcements until the next part of our meeting, but, uh, um, so, the next item is approval of agenda for, and that's for this session, this work session only.
Correct.
One second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve it. We'll go ahead and vote. Okay, so, we'll do a, a roll call vote.
Meyer?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Reisig?
Yes.
Alright, the agenda's approved. Just wanna remind everyone, board reserves the right to enter a closed session if deemed necessary. We don't have anything specifically on the agenda for executive session in this meeting, but always reserve the right to do so. Under general agenda items, um, we have discussion regarding property protest procedures. And so, uh, Mr. Robert, I'm assuming that we're gonna kinda turn this over to you and let you kinda guide us through however you want to, and we'll go from there.
Okay, great. Yes, I'll lead the discussion. We want to be interactive because I need the genesis, just to take the obvious, the genesis of this meeting, after our protest here last year.
Can I, can I give you two a microphone? Wait, I can turn Lisa's or you can stand, whichever you wanna do.
Thanks, Kelly.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the genesis of this meeting was after protests last year. We thought that there
could be things that we could improve, that we could do better, maybe not do, just to streamline the process, make it easier, and make it better for the taxpayer as well. Uh, so, in light of that, I put together an agenda with input from, uh, my office, um, as far as items that we wanna discuss, and I realized there may be items the board also wants to discuss, so, um, we should add to or take away from this as you feel fit. Um, I put a few things in the packet. You have the Form 422 and Form 422A that look very similar, and we'll discuss that, as well as Article fifteen of the Chapter seventy-seven statutes, which basically covers all of the protests, uh, so, the board's responsibilities, uh, the assessor's responsibilities, so, uh, it's not that bad of a read. It's about, I think, uh, twelve pages or eleven pages, so, I, I would urge everybody to take a look at that at some point, um, because it does have some interesting nuances in there and certain court cases to, to back some of those up. So, the first thing I had on the agenda is Form 422 versus 422A. In true fashion from the state, they give us two different forms to use for protest application for taxpayers. So, uh, last year, and we have to, the assessor's office has to accept a protest on either form, okay? The only difference between the 422 and the 422A is that the property, uh, is actually broken down a little bit further on the 422. It has land, buildings, and the total of land and buildings, and then personal property if they're protesting those. The 422A is real property and personal property. One, one thing that we'd like to do this year is, if they come to our offices, to give them the 422 versus the 422A, I doubt this board really cares, but I think it'd be easier for the taxpayers to fill out, uh, because it is broken down a little bit in more detail. So, that was the first thing on the agenda. Any discussion about that?
Which one are you gonna recommend, did you say?
422, if they come in to fill it out, but either is acceptable. Okay. No questions, we can move on. Uh, field reviews will be offered to all applicants, so, uh, as the board is aware, people applying for, or, or filing a protest has to file that with the county clerk's office, and the county clerk gives those to us on a, basically a daily basis, uh, of those that are being filed. What my office will do is, if they're not here in person, uh, we will call them. We, either way, whether they're in person or not, we'll call them. We're going to offer them a field review prior to a protest hearing, okay? So, uh, I say that 'cause I think it would be beneficial for a couple of different reasons. One, if there is a problem and they think that we've got some, uh, details wrong in their house, we can catch it early, possibly even resolve it and not have a hearing required. So, that's, you know, bonus number one right there. And then, on the flip side, if, um, we offer a field review, it is declined, and they come to the hearing and say, you know, "Hey, you've got this wrong on my house," um, you know, I, I think that that should be taken into consideration, that we've tried to, to be proactive and, and look at that information in advance. Um, next, next item that I have is, uh, prepare an information sheet that'll be handed out when protests are filed and it, and it check in for the hearing. So, um, I'm just envisioning a one or two-page document that would talk about, uh, the protest process, what they need to do, which they, or you should have that information, but then talk about how we set values in, at the county level. So, you know, I think everybody heard my speech like nine hundred times last year. You can probably all recite it. I want to avoid that.
Right, we're doing writing.
I wanna reduce it to writing.
Right.
And have it apply, you know, general enough that it'll apply to every scenario as far as how we set. We look at sales, we do, uh, we work building permits, and we also do, um, uh, neighborhood reviews. So, go into some detail on that, maybe some Q and A, and have that available, uh, when, and hand that out when they file the protest. And then, a second part of this is, we're suggesting that we have a desk out in front of this room to check people in. I think that has been done in the past, and the feedback that I've gotten from everybody involved was that that was a really good process to keep it kind of orderly and flowing, and we know who's here and who's not here, uh, a little bit easier because it'll be out there versus trying to manage it.
In the end, it was me doing it, and I was really good, but now I'm in here.
Yeah, so, and we can have an assessor staff person out there. I mean, um, I'm not, just have, how long do we have a person to run traffic?
At the time, somebody protests, what information can they bring you? What information will you accept on a protest if they feel that their property has not been valued property?
Sure, uh, so, pretty much what we would look at during the protest hearings, if they have an appraisal, that's kind of a done deal. Accept it, make sure it's done by a certified appraiser, accept it, make the change, and do a note.
And how long will you accept that appraisal for? I, I do wanna discuss it.
No, I think, I think that's, I know, I know, I, I think that they're good for six months based on lending, um, requirements, you know, that the lenders require that an appraisal not be over six months old, uh, and I know there's multiple positions on that, so, uh, we can talk about that. Uh, but typically, that's, I think that an appraisal's good for six months because it is a point in time. It's one property, it's not a mass appraisal.
Even though this board feels that a year or two years is adequate?
Right. Yeah, because the market does move quickly.
Well, I'm sure it does, but, but, a- and I, and I hate to use this, I, and that's one of the worst things I hate to hear. This is the way we've always done it. I, I, I don't, I'm not even going to refer to that.
Yeah.
But with a, with an appraisal, if somebody's gotta go out and spend four hundred to a thousand dollars for an appraisal, and it's only good for six months, in your eyes, just in your eyes, not this board's.
Right.
I have a little problem with that. I'm sorry. And, and, and I've got some others here that I wanna discuss also on, 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 uh, what they can bring you to see whether or not any, any conditions or anything could be, could be changed with that.
Right.
Before, before it comes to us.
Sure, yeah, and we'll, so, we can come back to the appraisal, because we wanted to discuss that. Other things would be, um, assuming that they've done their homework, which they should have, they should look at some comparables, probably through Beacon, through online services, be, be able to look to see what their neighbors' values are doing, what comparable houses are doing, bring that information to our office. We will sit down with anyone who wants to sit down and go over their, their protest.
Will you accept a, a licensed real estate market analysis?
No.
Why not?
Because I don't think it's, it, it's not as accurate and, um, independent as a certified appraiser. A certified appraiser's licensed, and I sometimes, not saying anything about this board, but I think that a real estate person's, um, opinion can be swayed depending on certain circumstances.
Yeah, I absolutely disagree, absolutely disagree with that.
Okay.
We do market analysis when you buy a house, you do a market analysis when you sell a house. The work that's put into a, a particular piece of property, and in many cases, is in my opinion, and evidently opinions count, because I, I'm, I'm gonna offer mine, that the, uh, and many times with some of the appraisers in this town, I would much rather take a licensed real estate appraisal, or not appraisal, but evaluation, o- over an appraisal, because of the work that goes in to do it.
If, um, my question on that is, uh, same, and that is, what does the, um, lenders, um, they won't accept that, will they?
Well, evidently not.
No.
Will a lender accept that?
They have to have a, a lender, if, if, any, you know, bank, um, credit union's gonna be lending on real property, they're gonna be looking for a certified appraisal that's no more than six months old.
And they have to have that in the file when they're, when the feds come through and audit their file?
That's right.
They...
It's part of the origination file.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna accept a market analysis, I don't believe, based upon what...
No, they will not.
The real estate closings I've been involved with.
They will not.
Robert, how does Sheriff Scott feel about, uh, uh, market analysis? What's her office here?
Um, I don't wanna speak for her, but I know in speaking with, um, a few different people at the state, um, an appraisal, a certified appraisal is the only way.
The only way?
Not, yeah, not a market analysis, not a internal appraiser from one of the banks. Like, I know last year, we had some internal appraisals from Flat Valley Bank, and while the board looked at them as a piece of information, I don't think that was, yes, this is absolutely
But, but yet, we will sit here, a protester will come in, have one or two comparables, and we as a board will even look up and give other comparables, and we've accepted that. We've, we've done fifteen minutes worth of work on comparing their homes to somebody else, and everybody goes, "Oh, yeah, I think that looks good. I think that's the way we should go." As, 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 you, are, you see where I'm headed with this?
Mm-hmm, that, that's your job, though, as the Board of Equalization.
Right, but we're willing to accept that, but we're not willing to accept an appraisal that's more than six months old, or, or a licensed realtor that has spent many times a lot of hours putting together a, a good market analysis. We're not willing to accept that, but willing to accept a protester's two comparables, or any of that we happen to add from up here.
You know, in, in, uh, in good faith, and I think this is acceptable, I mean, the state hasn't said, you know, hasn't made, made any statements to me anyway regarding how long, how old that can be. I think that I, in, um, uh, can, can say, um, and, and, you know, concede a little bit and say, "We'll take it for up to twelve months." That's, that's outside of what the lending standards are, but this is, we're not lending money to taxpayers out here, so, it is different, but I think if we go beyond a year, uh, we're way outside scope.
Do we have any say at all with any of this procedure, Bob? Robert, I'm sorry.
Um, when it comes to the assessor's office, unfortunately, no. When it, if, if a protest is filed, the board can make whatever decision they want to.
It's good for one year.
I think one year's reasonable.
Yeah.
The, uh, I, I think, uh, I think that's a, a good point, and that's that Robert may have certainly his, um, thoughts as to what criteria that he is going to look at and accept, but I think it's also a good point here, and that's that once a protest is filed, then, and it's brought before this group as the Board of Equalization, that we have the authority to make whatever decision based upon whatever information that we deem to be important.
That's, that's what my question was.
Well, I think, I think we have that authority as Board of Equalization. Now, it would be g- great if we were kinda all on the same page, including Robert, and it may be difficult to get six people on the same page, um, because I think there's some of us, um, that don't fully agree with all of that, but we should maybe kinda list those items again. I think a realer, a realtor's market analysis is a good piece of information, but I would never say, "And, oh, but, you bring that in here, and we promise you that that's what we'll accept, and that's what it'll be." I'm not willing to say that.
The, the state accepted it though, Mark.
Well, I don't...
Two, three years ago, they did.
Um...
That a market analysis by realtor is acceptable to break to the protest and be considered.
I think that it's acceptable to be considered, but that does not mean that just, what, if we only had one piece of information and it was that market analysis, that that's, if, if they brought it, that's law and gospel, and we have to accept that? I don't believe that.
Well, we haven't accepted appraisals before.
Yeah, in some cases.
We do, whenever you want.
Yeah, well, oh, I know, we had some, I remember early on when I was here, that, um, we had an appraisal, and several people up here said, "Well, I don't believe that. I don't like that. That's not the appraisal I was expecting," and we didn't accept it, and it was less than six months old, and, um, we didn't accept it, and so, we kinda broke our own rule with that.
Yeah, that would be... Well, the, the, my, my point is that i- if, if somebody's going to, going to take the time to protest, it's because they don't agree with what the assessment is. Sometimes they're right, sometimes they're not.
Right.
And, and this is their, this is their, their opportunity to bring that to us, and I know Robert doesn't like to hear this, but to get some relief, in, in, in some cases. Some cases they're right, some case, cases they're not. That's up to us to make that decision, but here are some tools that can help us make that decision.
Right.
And I, I don't wanna be hand-tied or tied up because six of us can't, can't decide on, on what we're going to use or what we're not going to use.
Well, I think, um, we probably can come up with a pretty good list amongst the six of us, that we can say, "If you bring this, 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 and this, these will all be..."
Considered.
"...looked at and considered when you come to file your protest." But, in my opinion, and I'll even say to about an appraisal, there's not one of those items that we would, that I would say, "You bring that, and you're, you absolutely, yes, we're gonna approve it." I don't, there's not one of those by themselves that can do that.
Why would we not, why would we not accept a modified appraisal?
Um, we probably would, okay?
But why wouldn't we?
Well, we did, I re, I vividly remember not...
I remember, but I don't remember what the circumstances were.
We didn't, we didn't...
It was way out, I mean, absolutely way out.
I had concerns.
Way out of line.
Yeah, I had concerns last year about...
An appraiser's somebody that you hire.
Yeah.
You hire that person, you say, "I want, I, this is what I need. Do the best you can."
And, and they...
What are they gonna do for you?
Yeah.
The best they can.
And they were, uh, but they were a licensed appraiser, and they are held to some standards and some, um, things that, and they're in trouble if they...
I think if they...
Intentionally...
I think if they rigged that, I think they would be held to pay.
In fact, I think we were even going, I don't remember all the details, but after that, we were willing to file a complaint with the commission.
Should've.
On, on that person.
Yeah, seriously, 'cause it was, it was so far...
If it's that far off, it should've.
It was so far out of line.
That would, we would straighten that right.
Yeah.
But I, I do believe that it, it would be helpful to say what they can bring to the, to the, um, protest and certified appraisal comparables, similar comparables, uh, preferably in their neighborhood, and how, whatever comparables that you would say, plus any other information. I'm sure you have five or six items...
Yeah.
...that you could add to that list and say, "If you'll bring this information, it will always be helpful to us," and, um, so that, uh, they can be considered, but...
Again, how many times protester shows up with one or two, and then we look up and, and, "Well, yeah, I think that looks pretty good. I, I'm gonna go with that one." And, and we've done Ted Bennett's worth of research on that, on that piece of property.
Go with that one, meaning a comparable?
A comparable or something that, you know, that, that the protester's brought in.
Yeah, well, I'm...
And, and we've done it numerous times, numerous times.
So, I'll go back and say to that, um, we've done it numerous times, and I think in the overall scheme of things, we gotta be careful about letting each one of those little things sway us significantly and have, um, I hope that as we continue to work through this process and having meetings like this, that we can get better and better and better about, um, the numbers that you, um, have on, on the appraisals, and then hoping that we can be generally, and I don't think we'll ever be fully, but generally supportive of the numbers that you break. And, um, I do believe that we send a bad message if all we do is take those comparables and, and think, "Oh, let's give this guy five percent, or let's give this guy ten percent, and let's just..." You know, the, the more we just throw those numbers out based upon maybe one comparable or whatever, is, um, I think it starts to get us in trouble, and then all of a sudden, instead of two hundred protests this year, we have five hundred next year and a thousand the next year, the more we do that, and the more we can hopefully stay somewhat on track as far as staying close to, um, we talk about, um, appraisers spending hours, certified appraisers putting appraisal together. We talk about, um, real estate agents putting, um, lots of time in to do comparables and a, and a market analysis, and, um, my, and I guess the point is, is that hopefully, we can rest assured that the assessor's office has spent hours on that property, over time, um, has spent, um, hours at, looking at that property. I know we do mass appraisals, which is a little different, but, um, uh, in the overall scheme of things, over a hundred years of property ownership or whatever in the, in the, some of the properties here, that they've been looked at many, many, many times, some by hand and some digitally.
So, I think that one of the goals of this meeting is to condense or, um, you know, make sure that our time that we spend together in July listening to protests is not as painful or, and there are not as many hours spent in this room in July. Um, so, I think it'd be helpful if we came up with a couple guidelines, um, that will say, "Yes, we will accept an appraisal within six months, or we will accept an appraisal within eighteen months." If we look at the commissioner letter that we send out to the folks, it says there, "If the protest is filed, it is a property's, property owner's responsibility to provide, to prove the error in valuation. There are generally three items that may be considered." So, I think some changes in the language here would certainly help, you know, um, because this, this leaves a lot up to interpretation, but when we say generally, when we say may be considered, then we open ourselves up to twenty-five minutes with the property owner here. It's supposed to be fifteen minutes, and we go on and on and on, and we all get angry at each other, custody assessor, and, and then Charlie calls Ken in early July, we have problems. So, let's, if we could, if we could dial these in to say, "We will accept an appraisal within six months. We may consider, or we will consider, an appraisal done within two years, or a realtor's market, market analysis will be considered," but we just need to bold those, those, those words, so that the protester knows what is a slam dunk, what is a layup, and what's a three-pointer, and, and, and that way we know, and that way, you know, if, if an appraisal comes in at six months old, and it comes into the office down there, and they can call the guy and say, "Hey, accept it."
Yeah, accept it right away, keep him out of here.
Keep him out of here. But we need to clean up this language, so that there's not so much general, so many generalities, and then, and so many may be considered or might consider, those sorts of things.
I think the reason, I think that that letter hasn't substantially changed over many years. I think it's been pretty much the same type of letter, but my, I believe, just as an assessor, uh, and Kelly might have more insight on this, is that it was purposely written, and it may be because there are unique cer- circumstances with every property that, that the board may want to consider something.
So, here's a, Kelly, here's, here's a situation is, is, you know, we said earlier that a lot of times a property owner hires the appraiser. What if we have, well, the banks do, and we round robin this thing, to where the property owner's not hiring the appraiser? Now, they don't, they're gonna pay for the appraiser, um, but they don't get to handpick who they want to, to do the appraisal. Same thing with the market adjustment, if, or market analysis, if, if, if realtors are doing this as a, you know, service, you know, a, a value-added service to a client, maybe that's one thing. We may consider that, but if we get to, if we're gonna round robin this thing, and we say, "Okay, first on the list is, is, you know, X, Y, Z appraisal company, second on the list gets the next one, second on the list, third on the list," and the homeowner doesn't get to choose the appraiser, then would we consider that?
The, the problem with that is that, um, you're talking a short period of time for when they file a protest until the hearing is heard, and usually there's a waiting list to get an appraisal, not always. Um, it might take more time to get a full-blown appraisal.
Which is why we should consider the other ones.
Right, hang on just a second. I owe Kelly...
My question was going to be, they get their change of value notice in June. They're, you can't hire an appraisal to get it done...
Quick enough.
By July.
Mm-hmm.
To be it within six months, and that's something you guys need to consider.
Well, we sent a lot of people out of here last year, telling them that if they had an appraisal done, we would accept that next year.
Then that sounds like twelve months.
So, they had a full year's notice, basically.
They should have a year to return it. If we told them last July to do it, and they did it anytime after July, it should be good next July, I would think.
Well, and I think on most of those...
And I've already said, we'll take, we'll take it twelve months, even though, uh, I mean, my, my initial thought had been six, six months, but I've already, for the record, said that we'll take it for twelve months.
I have you.
Yeah.
What's your, what's your opinion now on, on, uh, on a recent sale?
As long as it's a good sale.
A good sale, right.
You, you should consider that.
For how long?
For however long the board wants to. I mean, it, it, once the protester's filed, it's out of my hands.
Well, there's, there's the rub, is he says, "Should we consider it?" Well, we can consider a sale from four years ago, we can consider a sale from five years ago, and we will consider that. There's no way that we can't consider that, if the person sits there and tells us about it, who's gonna rattle around them here. But, what do, what will we accept hard and fast that the protest gets filed downstairs, and they can just call them and say, "Accept it"?
I would, I would, yeah.
Your office will...
I would like to recommend that we be consistent, so, if we're looking at, again, we do mass appraisal, we don't, we don't look at one sale, we look at sales by evaluation groups, and if we're gonna look at one sale, I s- I would suggest to the board that you keep it consistent with the appraisal, that, well, if we'll take the appraisal for a year, we'll look at the sale for up to twelve months. After that, you can consider it. That'd be my recommendation for the board.
I would, I, I think we should just take a straw poll here. I would, I I think we should just take a straw poll here to see how this board feels on those timelines, twelve months, eighteen months, two years. I would like to just straw poll right now. Will this board consider hard or accept hard and fast an appraisal within twelve months?
Just let me ask you a question before we do that straw poll. We can only deal with what happens from year to year, we can't go backwards. So why would we go backwards eighteen months on a valuation if we can't adjust it eighteen months back anyway?
A lot of times these guys don't know that they could have pro- protested, or you know, maybe they missed the yellow postcard and they. They didn't get it that time. Or maybe the, you know, maybe the um assessed value didn't change. But, you know, they have a sale that was eighteen months ago. But it didn't change, but it didn't change in those first six months, it didn't change until the next.
Only affects this year.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, the board's decision is good for one year.
And so, but I think what could help here, I um I think Robert is saying. That he would be willing, I think he's saying he would be willing to accept an appraisal that's twelve months or less. Or a sale, a arms-length transaction sale. That can arms-length according to him. And that he he's willing to accept that up to a year. And if he's willing to accept it, then it can be dealt with, no hearing needed.
He's willing to accept it if you direct him to do that before it comes to you.
Yes.
He's looking for direction, so he doesn't have, we don't have to schedule a hearing.
And then I think from my standpoint, I can buy into the one-year thought. And um now, I'm not willing to go more than that. But I'm willing to go the twelve months, I'm willing to go that, he's saying he's willing to go that.
And if that comes to you prior to, it would be no hearing needed, and we wouldn't have to see him here.
Right.
That's right.
Are you going to, are you going to accept realtor's market analysis for a year?
No.
Why not?
Uh for the same reasons I stated, I uh certified appraisals are held to a higher standard, they're licensed. They are independent, there are repercussions if something is found to be incorrect or done intentionally as far as evaluations. There's, there's none of that when it comes to a bri- a bu- a broker's price opinion or market analysis.
Yes, there is. What, what are the repercussions of a market analysis if it's gonna? If, first of all, if they're gonna pay you to do it, you hired that realtor to do that. And if they bring you information that is not correct or falsified or skewed one way or another, you could be turned into the to the real estate commission.
And what is the ramifications of that?
If whatever the real estate commission decides, you could be fined, you could lose your license, there's all sorts of ramifications from. And I, as I, as I mentioned to Mark earlier, it was approved by the state two or three years ago.
He did bring, you you did show us that language last year.
But nobody seems to wanna listen to that.
I I I and I'm, I'm a little biased because that's what I did for a living. Uh and 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 I've seen appraisals, I've seen appraisals that that have come in. Over and above a market analysis that a realtor's done, and I I can guarantee you that market analysis is is a lot closer. To what the appraisal came in at. I can, I can, I can guarantee it.
I've seen some appraisals that are pie in the sky as well.
That's exactly right, and that's why I'm saying if you, but if you use that as part of your whole package that you're helping you make your decision. Is much better than two or three comparables that the that the protester's bringing in. Or that we pull up on our computer and go, oh yeah, I think that's right, let's go with that.
What do we do Zoom with uh Sarah Scott and visit with her and just really, you don't think that's a good idea? Not today, of course.
No, no, I don't think that's a good idea.
Okay, what's wrong with that idea?
She's gonna defer to me.
Huh?
She's gonna defer to me. She would defer to me as far as to make that a standard for my office.
That's, I think that's gonna open a can of worms that we don't wanna open.
Well, that's what I'm asking now.
Told us in the past, and her predecessor has told us in the past that we shouldn't be accepting these sales. We shouldn't be accepting the appraisals. Um I. She's, yeah, these, she she does not want to ever see a no hearing needed protest. And that, that, I think that just shines a light on us in a way that that we don't want the state looking into how we're doing things out here.
And and I, and I agree with you, I absolutely agree with you, cuz the way, the way we do things in Scottsbluff County. Are miles apart from what happens in Douglas County or someplace else, and and we saw that. Not last year, it was last, yeah.
Yeah, it was two years ago.
Two, two years ago, when the state was here. All of, and and they would say, suddenly you go, what? Are you, where, where, where'd you, where are you coming up with that?
Best things up terribly.
Well, I, and I absolutely agree. The, the, the other thing before we get too far off track.
Yeah.
Is, is that. How many protesters did we have in here that said, I didn't know that, I didn't know I could do that, whatever.
A lot.
I, I think we need to get, we need to do something that.
I think that's what he's trying to build for those people right now.
The information sheet. When that person comes in, that that they are fully aware of what their, what their obligation is, they're fully aware of of. What they can do to maybe help themselves, they're coming to us for relief, guys.
Absolutely, but he's, I think he's gonna build him an information sheet that goes out instead of.
Not every, not everything is hard and fast. There are, there are some grays that we need to look at, and I think that's, I think that's what we're. I, I don't wanna go down that road, I don't want a gray road, I want one where we have, we, and I say we, the five of us. Have, have the ability to do what we think is right for that taxpayer when they come here.
I think we have that right, we have that right to do it on every protest.
I hope so.
We have that right. But in my opinion, um I, I'm not sure that it's in our best interest to just. Go off um and redo every single. Appraised value as recommended by the assessor, I'm not sure it's in our best interest to to change eighty-five percent of those. Um and it just, all it does is it just compounds the issue.
We're gonna have ten thousand people.
Next year, and the next year, and the next year, if they come back saying, oh, wow, all we gotta do. And frankly, I have told people, if you come to the protest. That there's an eighty percent chance you're gonna get a reduction in your, in your assess value, I've told people that. Three years ago, I've told people that. And I've changed my thinking process on that little bit, that um. The more we have done that, the more we have encouraged. People to protest and protest and protest and be here every single year.
Bigger real business is getting here.
And to your point about, you know, the meetings, I think Charlie even mentioned something about it too, as far as, you know, these. Uh hearings lasting longer, the board's up there doing research. I've read chapter seventy-seven fifteen more than once in, once in the last few days, read, read it very thoroughly. There's nothing in this, in there that puts the burden of proof on me or on the board. The board is not required to sit up there and look at MLS and try to find comparables. It should be on the merits of what the taxpayer brings. And granted, some taxpayers are a little bit more astute than others. I'm not saying that, you know, can't help them, that type of thing, but uh there's no, there's no requirement on the board's part to be be doing that.
Right, and I, I would say that when, when I started on this board, it was. The amount of protesters we had each year was always the fault of the assessor. And I'm with Mark, I think it is not the fault of the assessor anymore, it's more our fault for. Granting so many property owners relief. Um the um. Oh, I think it was my first year. Um I put a, you know, Star Herald or K N B asked me for a quote, and I said something like, we gave ninety percent of the people relief. And suddenly we have an extra week of protests the next year. I think people got the message. The, and that was definitely the wrong message to to convey, but, you know, I thought that was what we were supposed to do. I thought, you know, I mean, it felt really good to sit up here for five days and lower people's ta- property tax bill. It really did, but.
Lowered their value.
Which in turn.
In turn.
So, but, you know, he, so here we are, this mess that we've made.
Well, we would hope that.
We've gotta, we've gotta, we've gotta walk it back.
We've gotta hope that our assessor's office has the correct value, that's what they train for, that's what they look at these.
Well, for me as a commissioner, I have total confidence in our department heads. And I spend a lot of time in in Robert's office talking to the employees, and they really are trying to do a good job. And my philosophy has been, when we sit there and give away the farm every year. We're really not treating those people who did not come in to protest fairly. We need to make our decisions best, based on the best information we have. And I'm gonna weigh real heavily with the assessor's office. But I will look real heavily at a certified appraisal. I will consider a market evaluation, cuz those are good forms of information. But we really need to have trust in our assessor's office. And you could, and I know for a fact that his staff gives a lot of good information to the customers when they come in. I listened to some of those conversations, and they are sharing a lot of good valuable information to the people. But they're again, you can take a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. And that sometimes that's the issue we have with our people unfortunately, is you can provide them a lot of information. But it's up to them to use that information, and we can't force them to use it.
Um so a couple things I think we need to mention here, um. We've been talking for about forty minutes, and we've covered some good things, things that need to be, that we needed to talk about, um. And those are good. I still wanna be sure that we can let you kinda lead us through this process and tell us about some of your plans, cuz I think. You're gonna cover some of these issues, uh Robert, I'm assuming, and already have.
Quite a bit to cover yet, so.
And so, I'm a little concerned about, um I'm hoping that we're done by four o'clock. Four fifteen at the absolute latest. Um but um um don't hesitate to ma- write a note. And we wanna be sure and discuss things, and you'll give us time to discuss more things.
Yeah, and it might be very good for us to take this, absorb it, we're all taking notes. And then come back at some point in the near future.
Well, we could do that too, but we've already touched on some good things that we needed to talk about, so I appreciate that. All right, go ahead.
Okay, so we already touched on the next item, set up check-in desk, got that commissioner's room, I didn't hear any opposition to that. Um scheduling of hearings, so this is, this is an area where we can be creative, okay? I think in years past, I can't speak for too many years, but in talking with people that basically the. Uh protest period, June one to June thirtieth, typically hearings won't set until after that. By statute, we can have uh protest hearings in June, okay? So it'd be up with the scheduling with the clerk, uh we could schedule those, but we could. Um you know, kind of have targeted days, you know, once a week or something throughout the protest. Probably not the first week, give me time to to prepare, but second, third, fourth week, fourth week in June possibly has some hearings then. That way, when we get to July, we're not in a mad rush to have all the hearings completed by July twenty-fifth. And it breaks it up a little bit.
So.
Can't you send out the change of value notices earlier than June one also, maybe?
I can.
So what you're saying is that we could kinda just, this is just an example, but we could kinda say, okay. Every Tuesday, Wednesday of the week of of June. That Tuesday, Wednesday, we would try and set those for protest hearings. And then Tuesday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then.
Whatever works out, yeah.
We get closer into July, that we can decide how many other days that we need to.
Do you have enough intruders to do that, cuz you're not gonna wanna have John set up everything, and then do the back of everything. That's just one thought to have.
I do not have enough extras to, I mean, I have a laptop, so I'm gonna plug mine, that's easy for me. Probably just, probably just one, maybe two, extra two, some, somebody from the assessor's office instead of.
Just, right, but just a thought, possibly.
I know last year John found a computer.
Yeah, yeah, I bet he could find a computer or two.
But I'll write that down, cuz we need to make considerations for that, we're right, the uh equipment.
I'll tell you what I don't wanna have, is two and a half weeks of twelve-hour days.
Right, right.
I'm not gonna do that, I, I will, I will dismiss myself for half a day or whatever has to happen. I'm, I still haven't recovered from that, so.
I hear ya, I hear ya. I think, I think it's um, it's not fair to anyone. Not fair to everybody that's in this room, not fair to the taxpayers. Because some of those hearings will last until ten o'clock at night, and I mean, let's face it, when we've all been in this room for twelve hours, we start to get a little frustrated.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it's not good.
Yeah, so anyway, that's, that's an option, technically from June one through July twenty-fifth, we can have hearings. So uh let's think about that. Also be aware, I know, um just as a FYI. Oregon Trail Days are July tenth through the thirteenth. So uh if we wanna make any consideration there to not have public hearings on those days or limited amount, I don't, I don't know what the board wants to do.
Last year, we were right in the middle of that, right?
That's right.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know that that bothered me a whole lot.
I, I don't know that it really bothered anybody, to be honest with you.
Did anybody else, but.
I think the only consideration would be like parking.
That would be what?
Parking.
On Friday a little bit, maybe, but.
For the taxpayer, yeah.
Yeah, if they're trying to get in here and everything's full. Yeah.
Get our spot early.
Yeah, and that would only. Be on Friday, or it would be on Saturday if uh.
Didn't we make accommodate, I think, I feel like Jay may have set aside. No parking for, these are reserved for pro- property protests only. I mean, cuz Angie's actually running somebody out of my parking spot.
You know, at, at the most, you may have a half a dozen people in here backed up doing it, I don't think that's gonna be a big issue.
Cuz they should be coming and going.
Yeah.
But like he, he did reserve us, he could.
Sure.
Reserve a, an area for us.
Well, we'll certainly consider that when we get ready to set the days for hearings though.
Yeah, and this, this item kinda can go in conjunction with next item about overtime. We did have our overtime cut for the twenty twenty-five budget. But if we split up the hearings, the public hearings for protests. And do it between eight and four thirty, it will eliminate a lot of overtime for my office. And save the taxpayer money. If, if we end up going, doing those twelve, fourteen, sixteen-hour days. I'm gonna have to pay overtime, and I probably don't have enough overtime money in my budget, which would lead us to two things I put on there. One, we'd have to look to see, is there other money in my budget that we can use for that? And hopefully we could use all of that way, or last resort, see if we need to take some funds from the general fund for, to fund that overtime.
Technically, your budget is bottom line.
Yeah.
So.
But as we get a little bit closer, we can look and say, yeah, we're gonna have an extra X number of dollars. Obviously, I'm, I'm like, I'm with Ken, I don't wanna go from nine to ten, you know, nine and ten.
And technically, July's in the next year's budget, right?
Yes.
Uh.
Yes.
Right.
I think if there aren't any hearings also offered outside of the eight to four thirty. There will be more backlash from property owners.
Public.
Yeah, I mean, like, I'm not saying that it's a reason to absolutely cut it off, just be aware that. They'll be like, you're treating me unfairly because I have to work to pay all these big taxes and, you know, I mean.
You're absolutely right, I know we're joking about it, but when they come in here, they. They, they've taken, they've taken off work, they have a concern, and then they come in here and they want some kind of answers.
Well, and another thing, you could have some people come in at noon and stay later, I know you don't wanna work till nine, but. We've been doing this for, since old, twenty-eleven, I can tell you, we were going nine to nine. And sometimes eleven or twelve.
And we were a lot younger too.
I know that.
I don't know if you realize that or not.
I, I completely realize it.
Well, anyway, we can, we can discuss that.
In June, because we're gonna be offering field reviews to go out, if anybody has new things, we're gonna be offering that. So it can, can be a kind of a foregone conclusion when they're standing up there, they've already been asked. Um so that's gonna take a lot of our time.
Right.
Are you going to like offer, like, they're standing here, they said no to. Are you going to like offer, like, they're standing here, they said no tour review? I think it's, I don't know, I know that we had Steve run it like crazy, and I don't think that's fair to them. Really to have to, hey, I need you to run out to Lyman and do this.
Right.
Are we gonna like cut them off and say, hey, you were offered this?
Yeah, page two.
I haven't read ahead.
Great mind.
And I have that on my list as well.
Yeah.
There has to be a limited.
Has to be kept to a minimum.
And say, hey, uh, yeah, but we, and I, I've seen us do that for several years. And, uh, you know, it is a neat courtesy, but frankly, um, there's only a limited amount of those you can do, and to think that we can do it, hey, we're here talking, let's do it tomorrow morning. Or let's do it this afternoon. Um, you're gonna run out of people, you're gonna run out of time, you're, and then, then they have to come back to hear whatever you found, and that means we have to set another hearing time, um, to get them in, and that just doesn't work well.
Yeah, if you think about the, the timing of the state calendar, we're still gonna be accepting homestead applications a month of June, doing all these field reviews, fielding all the questions at the window and on the phone for people wanting to file protest. Um, and then, if we, even if we, if we start having some hearings in June to throw more field reviews on top of that,
Yeah.
could be pretty ugly.
Yeah, I think we get. Gotta figure out a way not to do that.
Minimize it.
Right, minimize it, yeah.
Okay. Um, the next one really goes without saying, I just threw it on there, but we need to make sure that the assessor mapping and clerk offices are all represented in each, uh, meeting. So I know we kinda struggled last year a little bit because our mapping department was out. Um, that's not gonna happen this year, so either, uh, Tim or Amanda. Okay. So, um, um, oh, and then next item on the, last item on the first page, set time limit for taxpayers to present case and adhere to it. So I think we've been really good, of course, this is my, going into my second year, so, uh, I don't know everything, but we were really good last year about telling everyone you've got fifteen minutes. Forty-five minutes into the hearing, we're still going.
Right.
And, um, in some cases are probably warranted, depending on circumstances. But I think in general, we need to try to keep it to a.
And I think the issue to that is, um, does that count for each property? Because the people with ten properties, you know, what are we doing with that? Um, is, and so we have to consider that, but one of the things that, um, number one, one thing that'll help with that is to explain that real clearly and firmly in the letter, that pre-letter that they get, possibly the commissioner letter that they get can be a part of that.
That will have to be revised this year as well.
Then one other thing that could happen is, um, we could give them, uh, you know, how they do at, uh, some of the other political places and that, uh, green light, yellow light, red light, and kinda saying, hey, when it says yellow, you better be winding up, cause we're headed to, to, to finishing this thing.
Right.
We could also look at too, some sort of even hourglass buzzer timer. I, I, yeah, I think we had a couple of thoughts just on this topic itself. Um, so we've always done the fifteen minute increments and then tried to, like last year, I mean, we were looking at, what, nine hundred, nine hundred and fifty protests, so that's why I cut it down to ten minutes. Um, but then, if you cut it down to ten minutes, you've cut, you gotta stay at that or else, you know, I mean, we ended up being here ten minutes.
And, and I'm okay with that, I have no problem with that at all.
So.
Yeah.
My questions on this is, do you want the calendar to go back to fifteen minute increments, ten minute increments? And then, uh, just like you said with multiple parcels, what I was trying to do is if they had two parcels, they got the same amount of time as one, but then they got half an hour if they had over two parcels. But then you have like two minutes, I mean, can you really give them five hours?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's gotta be within reason a little bit too, and, um,
You had seven, I think, seven last year, so.
Would like, yeah, I mean, it wasn't like the year before. Um, but I think our office would love to have some parameters as far as that with the multi-parcels, cause it kinda seems like no matter which way we go, someone isn't happy with it. But we kinda gotta do the best we can and all kinda work together with the.
The multi-parcels, I think, you don't need the time necessary to do it. The other one is if somebody is having a particular issue with, with their piece of property, and it's, it has some difficulties with it, it's not something, not black and white answers, but there's something that needs to be either looked into or discussed or whatever. They came here for a reason, folks, and, and to say, okay, your five minutes are up and I hit the road, well, I didn't get all my questions answered. And, and, and we assume that as a, as a, I'm losing my voice already, we haven't even started. But we assume that as a taxpayer, that they understand everything that's on that form, and they know everything that they're supposed to do. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, and that's what's causing the problems. And, and, and I think everybody needs to fully understand what's on that form, if they have questions, to get the questions answered. Maybe not before they come here, but if they didn't get it done, then this is where they, this is where they come to explain it.
Well, looking at like this last year, I mean, a lot of people had six to eight parcels each because of the land only things, you know, like in Lyman, they own like six little lots altogether. Well, then you're gonna, giving them sixty to seventy minutes with that ten minute timing, which, I mean, your schedule is filling up like crazy, you got people coming in.
Yeah, they're backed up, yeah.
It's just like.
Well, I, I would only suggest something, between now and when the protest time starts, um, maybe between your two offices, you guys can talk about that. But I certainly agree that one parcel's one thing, two parcels is another thing. After that, multiple parcels should be something shorter, and we always have the authority to extend, um, the session, and, uh, we'll do that if we think it's necessary, but we, again, don't want that to be the normal. We want them to have an expectation that they need to give us their information in a clear and concise way. Present us your information, let us talk about it, make a decision. And, um, we just don't want, and we'll still get some, but, you know, just going on and on and on. Um, if they know they have a, a kind of a deadline, then hopefully they'll, they'll stay on track and, and be as concise and, and short as they can.
So none of you would be offended if we looked into getting some sort of a bell or some sort of timing device?
My, some type of timing device, my only issue with the green, yellow, red is it gives them, the yellow gives them a warning. And the, the bell, uh, if that's an immediate stop, then that's, I don't like that, but, um.
Like a two minute warning or something like that?
Hours. Right, and, um, where they can say, okay, I got two minutes left, and so that they can wind down their presentation and, and then we can talk, but we're not gonna, particularly if, um, a lot of times, part of the extended portion of that is because of us. And we're not, uh, in my opinion, we wouldn't be cutting people short because of our questioning of those people, so.
Right.
But, and then our only fortunate thing is then we have a few no-shows and things like that, and so sometimes we get caught up. That saves us sometimes.
Sometimes you don't realize fifteen minutes has gone by, cause you're really looking into what you're doing, and you're like, oh shoot.
Yeah, it, more time has lapsed than what you thought.
And most of it's because the taxpayer did not come prepared, and we're doing a lot of things for them.
Right, and so.
And that happens more times than not, that's the other.
I wouldn't do it.
So all of this stuff that, like, you're, you're gonna try and get them to be as prepared as they can be with a sheet you hand them when they come to file and or mail to them. And I agree, and the commissioner letter helps, and then whatever other things. Those things that we repeat, time after time, customer after customer after customer, we ought to be able to get that in writing and not have to repeat and repeat and repeat ourselves. Um, they should be able to know that before they ever get here.
And that can take at that front desk.
Right.
When they walk in, hand them a piece of paper, and there it is.
Right, cause.
And that's alright.
Even give it to them when they file their protest.
Right, because you know what's gonna happen, even if you give it when they file, they're gonna get here and say, oh, I've never seen that. Yeah, and, um, so handing them and be, being prepared to hand them another copy is gonna be a good idea.
But that, that spiel that Robert goes through at the beginning, or the spiel that the chairman goes through at the beginning, could easily be done at the check-in process.
That's right. Right, and that'll save some time, and take questions, right, or curate that, right? And like you said, it's their responsibility to present their case to us, to start at least, and then go from there.
That's right. Okay, top of second page. Isn't that doing too bad?
Yeah, you're gonna be on the yellow light pretty quick, we're gonna let you know.
Yeah, so, goes without saying on the top one there, I think everybody did really well last year with upset taxpayers, but we shouldn't tolerate profane language or yelling or anything like that, any type of behavior, name calling.
Profa- name calling, we had that and kinda got us straightened out on that.
Took care of that one.
Yeah, she did, and I should have.
Should be just asked to leave.
We should have, right, um.
Protest is over.
Over.
Right.
Yeah, we're done protesting.
Right, we'll make a decision, you can go ahead and go.
We don't need that.
Yeah.
Okay, and the next item I know is, we talked about, I brought this up last year, and it was kind of a hotly contested item, but I think there's some merit in it. Um, by not setting hearings for protests where forms are not completed properly and send letters to the taxpayers. So the statutes allow for this, if the form is not filled out properly. Now, as a matter of due course, I think we have a responsibility, if somebody mails in a protest form and something's wrong, I think we should reach out to them, try to ascertain that information. Short of that, the board has the ability to not hear that. There, and there's a process where I think the clerk's office, there's a letter, you can go through that, we got statutes in there. Um, so that there's a whole process you can go through, um, if, if the protest form is not filled out properly. And I don't wanna get people on technicalities, but last year, I mean, we had people writing numbers all over the place.
They were way off.
Way off, um, you couldn't even, we looked at the protest form, we had to rely on our system because the numbers were written down, were not even close.
We had some people asking it to be higher than it was.
Cause that's what?
We had one, I think there was one of them, they were asking it to be higher than what it was already set at.
That was a short hearing.
To sell the property, then it'll be that.
We have had some do it intentionally, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, that's a thing to consider, um, where we wanna draw the line on that. I do think if it's mailed in, um, we should make a phone call if it's not right. If it comes to the window, uh, we should have them fix it while they're there. So. That would require coordination between our office, is there at our office or your office, and the back and forth?
I mean, we could also look at things like, they were getting a lot better last year, but everybody in your office was new, I mean, you know, it's not, you have a great staff now and stuff. The last couple of years, part of our problem was that they weren't being given a lot of information at the assessor's office or have any help filling it out. Um, but I think that's probably gonna be different, I think your staff now is gonna spend, you know, time, I know Tracy was, um, up at the hot, a lot, but between all the reviews and stuff like that, I think, um, some, some of the others were just kind of initialing and sending them on their way, and that's where we have some of these issues of, I didn't know that you made an appraisal, I didn't know. Um, and so I think that a lot of that, yes, they're gonna have to be at the counter a lot and do a lot of talking, basically do what you did here, all day, every day, and I mean, that's what we've done for years down there, but I think that that could help if there could be some help filling out the form. And like, I mean, Kelly and I know how to fill out a form, top to bottom, but our girls, I mean, we make cheat sheets for them and everything, but I would definitely defer that more to your office for helping them fill out to make sure they get it right.
The way that the statutes are, I think it makes it more difficult to be very honest. So, the people with the expertise to know how to fill out the form, get the land value, get all of that, have access to the systems, are all in the assessor's office, but state statute requires the protest form to be filed with the clerk's office. Which, other than you, nobody has access to MIPS, to be able to say, yes, the land value's right, you, I mean, you just have to take it at face value. So, I don't know, maybe we can figure something out, you know, maybe I have a person over there part of the time helping out. Maybe we give additional people access to MIPS, uh, if they're gonna be at the, at the counter there, so they can do it as well.
When I was up there, yeah, I'd help them a little bit more, but I, I can't expect that of Dusso or I surely. Um, so, yeah, if we can, if they can get more information from us, it's gonna make this whole process like thousands of times easier for everybody.
But just because the way the statutes are written, it is inherently makes it more difficult, so, but we can talk about that.
Well, and before, some of the assessors, uh, offices didn't want us to be giving any information at our office. You know, basically, don't be telling what we're doing from your office, you know, I mean. So, uh, it would just be, oh, they have to come down and talk to the assessor's office, so.
You're not gonna hear that from me, not at all. Um, basically, since you guys are required to take them.
We're required to take the protest period, they're, they are required to file a lease my office.
Yeah.
I don't think that we need to be explaining values. I think it's a dangerous place for us to be.
I think I'm talking more along the form itself.
Okay, and then, so then, now that we're on the, does that mean if they don't separate land apart from the, the real pro- the building values, that this will be considered incomplete, and we're not taking it?
I would say if there's something that's mailed in and it's not right, we would call them, otherwise we'd need to resolve it at the counter.
Total land and buildings value is only, without the breakdown?
I would be okay with that, if they were just, if they just filled out total land and buildings protestant value, total land and.
I would be too, I mean, that's not an issue.
Again, we are as. Again, we are assuming that the protester knows everything there is to know about this.
Exactly.
And they don't, they don't. We have a gentleman sitting right back here that at some point would like to speak when we get through our stuff on, on, on an item that they had problems with, had they, had they, had they understood everything on this, it wouldn't be sitting here, okay? So I, I, I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that not everybody is as responsible as we are when it comes to all of this stuff.
And another thing, I mean, when somebody was only protesting their land, they have the value of the land rate, but they didn't have the total of their parcel rate.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's not gonna happen, and we, and we need to take that.
But if somebody fills out a form and they just write in here, my taxes are too high, or I can't believe you would increase me by twenty percent in one year, throw that out.
No supporting information.
Throw it away.
It will come before you to be thrown out.
I, I don't think so.
The board?
I think we have to.
No, accept them.
Now, if you're in, if, no, the statute says in counties with a hundred and fifty thousand more residents, population of a hundred and fifty thousand or more, all they have to do is sign the bottom of this paper, and they get fifteen minutes in front of the Board of Equalization. But in counties smaller than that, they have to fill this out correctly, and we can determine if they fill it out correctly.
But you need to determine that, that.
And I think this board should make that determination prior to giving them fifteen minutes on the calendar and say, if you just cussed me out in the letter here, or in the protest form here, I'm not gonna give you, you're not gonna come take fifteen minutes of my day.
It needs to be in your letter, what specifically needs to be filled out, and then you could put a blurb in there. If your reasoning is the taxes are too high, it will be dismissed, plain and simple, again, black and white.
Yeah, yeah, so the statute is, is seventeen, or seventy-seven dash, uh, one, five, zero, two, uh, and, in short, uh, says a protest shall be dismissed by the County Board of Equalization. When it, and it talks about those circumstances, so you do, the board does have to dismiss it.
It may, it may be dismissed, which is up to the.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, that's not shall, it's, it's may.
So one thing we could do then is when, once we get all these protests in, or as they come in on a rolling basis, you know, those, those protest forms that are in question, you know, bring, bring those items that are in question before us, that we can just take them, we can make a motion en masse, or we can, uh, you know.
Anytime on or after June first, the, the board can make that decision, because you can, can, can. Anytime on or after June first, the the board can make that decision because you can can can, Board of Equalization can convene and do that as well as the hearings themselves.
Now, is this something that's going to fall under Board of Equalization on the typical meetings?
I think that would make a lot of sense, you know, just on a typical Monday.
Every meeting, we go into the Board of Equalization.
We could discuss those.
And so it can be an agenda item under the Board of Equalization.
Not the protest itself, only the form and whether it will be accepted to report. And then would they have a chance if we're still within June first to June thirtieth and filing it amended?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, it would do whatever needs to be done, absolutely.
Yeah, I would, I would think our, I hope our goal would be, and and Robert's already saying that on some of them that are slightly, or or um, i- i- if some appear to be wrong, you're gonna try and correct it with them.
Yeah, and in the statute it says counties may make reasonable efforts to contact, may, doesn't mean you have to. May make reasonable efforts to contact protesters who have timely filed a protest, but have, um, but have either filed incomplete information or not used the required form, so.
And I can tell you now, our office typically calls them first, says, hey, you're missing the parcel number, whatever. Um, you can come back and get into it, or you can email me in the form. If we can't get ahold of them, I was doing a letter and I was sending their original form back to them, I kept a copy. But I was sending the original back, like, hey, you have your original, this is not on file, you need to fix it and file it before June thirtieth.
So it made an effort to try to get it to do it correctly.
Yeah, we tried to call first, but if they didn't answer or whatever.
One other thing I wanted to say when we were talking about this form and getting it filled out correctly and, um, that a lot of people don't understand it, and I understand that. Um, but this is not our form, we didn't make this, if we would have, we would have maybe done it different. This is the state's form, and the state does give a whole page on the back of how to fill it out.
That's right.
And so I think they've tried to do the best they can to make it reasonable and doable. But I, the other part of that discussion that I think that I had on my list was, um, we need to be real real careful here using acronyms and just, um, certain words that are common to the appraisal process is totally foreign or Greek, so to speak, to a lot of the customers. And, um, they don't understand all the words that we use. And so I think it's important that we're careful with that and, um, uh, try and make it in as easy to understand language as what we can. And you're gonna get to another part that I wanna talk about too.
Yeah, but but you're right, and I'm guilty of that too, cause I said it's in our CAMA file and everybody up here says, yeah, and borrowers, or the not borrowers, taxpayers probably go, what's that? And it's our working file, um, but, yeah, so we can all improve on that.
Or you sound like you could give the meaning right behind it, like, it's in our CAMA file, it's just like our working file, that's where we hold our information.
Yeah, that's an excellent example, the CAMA file, uh, they don't have, I mean, I don't even know.
They still don't know what it is.
When you use the term mass appraisal.
Uh-huh.
Ninety-nine out of a hundred taxpayers have no idea what you're talking about when it says mass appraisal.
Yeah.
That's your term, we understand what it is, you understand what it is, but but the poor schmuck sitting out here doesn't have a clue what you're talking about.
And when we talk about neighborhood, as you know, many times they're thinking they're immediate one or two block neighborhood right here.
Right.
And it's really a lot bigger than that in most cases.
Okay, that's right, that's absolutely right.
Okay, keep going.
Okay, um, so we talked about that one. So parcel combinations in hearing, this was, this took a great amount of time last year. What I would like to do, well, I can't promise anything as we get these, um, protests in my office, we're gonna be going through them, obviously we have scanned them, we have to go through them, um, and get ready for the protest hearing. If we see that there's a combination opportunity, and we will be on the lookout for that. Can't guarantee we'll catch it every time unless a borrower says something, but, uh, you know, I'm gonna instruct my staff that when we go through these, okay, look at the parcel, and look at all the parcels around, to see if there's a continuous property owned by the same type.
Can help them.
Yeah. Because I do think that took a lot of time, and and last year was a little weird because we didn't have the mapping department for a week. And we were, we were kinda flying by the seat of our pants on some of those combinations, it all worked out, but, uh, it was kinda touch and go there for a while. Um, consistent language, can you, your, first thing you said, I don't like the word relief. Um, I don't like the word relief, um, when you read the regs, it talks about remedies. Uh, I think relief has a different connotation to it, um, so, I mean, that's up to the board, you can say whatever you wanna do, that's my recommendation. Um, but I do think that that has a different connotation to it than you have a clear path, you have a sole path for a remedy, and that is to file a protest and file a Turk appeal, i- in that order. And that's really your your remedy, those are your options. Um, again, evaluations are only considered for the current year, that's by statute, prior years play no part in the current hearing, every year stands alone. Um, and I kinda, next one should go without without, uh, saying, but we need to make sure that we're serious and professional with all of our decisions, I think the board was really good, I think we got off of base a couple of times. And I wrote, yeah, and I wrote a couple of instances there, um, and, um, that, you know, I I just, I just think if we can make sure that, uh, it, I think it's one of those things that if we go back and or somebody goes back and looks at the the tape and and the words that come out of our mouths, are we really making sure that we're doing the right thing every time? I think there are certain cases where, you know, I mean, a lot of it is, hey, we're punch drunk after being here for fourteen hours. Um, but it's just one of those things, I have to remind myself about it too, so.
One of the.
I'm not pointing fingers.
One of the things that, um, when you talk about words, um, that has concerned me that we've used some, I've used it some, but, um, a lot of times we'll talk about if, um, if we let Robert, uh, and his staff come up with a number, um, then it'll stick.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm concerned that when we say it'll stick, that that means to them next year, that's where it's gonna be. And we all know that that's where it starts. But, um, when we say that's gonna stick, then I I think it sends the wrong message. And we should just word it a little differently, that that's where the assessor will start from next year. And it won't be, won't be starting at the higher price.
Adjustments are made off of, uh, neighborhood reviews and sales study.
Right.
That final, that number can change from that.
And so, and I'm guilty of that one, I've said it myself many times, and I just think that we'd be better off not to use that because it gives indication that next year they should expect that number. And that's not the case.
Right.
Do do you guys even need to say anything like that at all?
Well, we we need to, we need to try not to.
Is to have accurate data, which we would be getting already, and we don't need to say it'll stick, this is our start.
What happens is is.
There is a neighborhood increase.
Right, but with that customer standing there, we're trying to sell them on the idea. And when we're trying to sell them, that's when we're saying, you should accept this because then it will stick. And, um,
Well, how about?
So, um, we shouldn't use that language.
They don't need to accept it either, it's your decision, period. The Board of Equalization makes the decision at the protest.
That's true.
You don't need to sell them on your choice, you make your decision.
No, but we like them to be in agreement, you know.
Still, at the same time, you know, if if he doesn't agree with that, it just starts all back, or it just makes that ball roll.
Rather than starting with the number that I agreed to, it starts with the pre-protest total.
Right.
And so, which can be a much higher number.
Right, so it's just another one of those little things we say that we need to be careful of, you know.
Will you be looking at each protest prior to the hearings this year?
Yeah, I looked at a significant number last year, but we just didn't have, didn't have the staff, didn't have the expertise to get through all of it.
Cause that'll cut out a lot of that too, because if they do have a review and there's something that he can make stick, might be discarding it before they need to get here, so hopefully that'll be cut down a little bit for listeners.
Right, yeah, that'll be good.
And I want, I want to, uh, educate with Steve's help and Siobhan's help, educate everybody in our office that when somebody comes to our window and is filling that form out, that if we see something, do something. See if we, something we can fix or resolve right then and there before it ever gets filed with the clerk.
Cause that, that didn't happen last year.
We didn't have time.
Like, well, whether you had time or didn't have the people or whatever, but there were numerous people that I talked to that said they came in for help and were told, well, you just have to go before the board. No, there there is a, there is a step in between, that 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 could have happened and didn't happen, and that's, I I wanna eliminate.
Yeah, there there was a lot of of people that we we weren't being proactive with due to not having the staff to be able to do it, and, um, but this year, but this year I think we can do a much better job of that, cause we've got, um, a couple of, yeah, you got some trained staff, some very conscientious staff, and they get it, you know, I think for the most part, the folks get it and they'll be able to have those conversations.
I wanna back up just just a minute here, well, actually not back up, but every year stands alone. If it's something that was a error in your office and it was caught somewhere along the line, okay? The gentleman in the back is gonna be, he's got some questions, that's why he's here. But if it's, if it's a, an error and not, I mean, maybe error's not the word, we we didn't catch it for whatever reason, we did catch it. And and they come here and they say, you know, for the last two years or three years, I've been paying taxes on this building that I don't have. And I tried to make it clear, but nobody was listening to me, but so now, can I get a refund or can I get some relief, relief? Can I, can I get something, can we look at all of this?
Is there a remedy for this?
When it's not the taxpayer, so, it, I I don't know that this year only would be something to stick to. Cause there may be something that had happened two years ago that just keeps coming forward and coming forward and coming forward.
And those those aren't Robert Simpson's words, that's straight from the statute that every year stands alone. Um, and, uh, in in that chapter seventy-seven, article fifteen that I gave to you, it's it's fairly clear in there. Once, and once a taxpayer goes through a, um, protest hearing, the the decision from the board stands, I can't change it unless it gets taken to Turk and Turk changes. And I, in in the particular case you're talking about, I talked with other assessors, I called the state, I did due diligence, I pulled the regs, gave you the information, Ken gave the taxpayer the information, my hands are tied. Yes, the assessor's office, starting two or three years ago, had, um, bad information in the system as far as basically doubling the square footage for the garage. Um, and had I known about it before the protest hearing and the decision was made, I could have fixed it.
Now, I did, I did send you the seventy-seven one twenty-eight, you didn't respond, so I don't, I don't know what your feeling was on that.
Yeah, the these, and I talked with Mark about it, uh, Mark Lewis. The state, um, has a very narrow view of what is a clerical error. It's something that had been outstanding for two to three years, it's good, I just think it qualifies as a clerical error.
Is there, is there an opportunity for the property owner to see the clerical error that's causing this, I mean, or?
Everything's online, so you can see the pictures, you can see the data.
Your square footage is all on there.
Square footage, you know, your garage, if you have any, if you have any evidence, your garage is, all of that is in there. It it leads to your valuation, and it has valuation for current year, prior year, and it has tax information for the prior several years.
Like ninety, you know, oh, on your page, like two hundred, two thousand and five?
Two thousand and eight, yeah, so, there's a lot of information, the information is there. And I know last year during the the hearings, we consistently told everybody, if you think we've got something wrong, we wanna have the right data, please have us come out before January one, so we could do a review to make, so, cause we have to set values as of twelve oh one AM on January the first. Um, not my rules, state rules, uh, and we, I think we consistently told everybody to do that. And this is a really unfortunate circumstance you were talking about, Ken, we know that it was wrong for the last year or three years, but I can't do anything about it.
Did we, did we discuss if if this individual protest this year? Did I misunderstand you that we might be able to to do some adjustments for for those prior years or not?
You said that, I did not say that, and I clarified in an email when I sent it out to everybody with the statutes, made sure everybody knew it was very clear. You said that we could could possibly look at taking into consideration those two or three years. I did not agree to that, I I remained silent when you said that because I didn't know if you knew the statute or not. Uh, but then I, but I pulled the statute and sent it to you and to the taxpayers. Uh, but clearly, I can't tell the board what to decide. I would think that you'd want to follow the state statute, and I know that everybody does. But you're not supposed to take into consideration prior years, it's just each year stands alone.
Well, even even though we we were made aware of it, and so it's it's just there.
If I had known sooner, I could have done something about it for that tax year.
What do, what do we value, garages at these days per square foot?
It depends on so many different things, does it have concrete, does it not have concrete, does it have lacquer siding, does it have sheet siding, does it have? Roofing, what type of roofing material, is it detached? I couldn't even say a number, cause I see them from, you know, a thousand dollars to forty thousand.
Bottom line, even if it's the office, the office made the mistake or whatever, or the taxpayer didn't understand what all need to be on, and it went for two years or three years, tough luck, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, the burden, I mean, this, I, I'm honestly, you know, I feel bad about it, but the burden is on the taxpayer to look at their information and protest, and they realize that this particular taxpayer protested last year. But they didn't, didn't realize that we had the square footage on the garage wrong, okay? But the burden of proof is on them, and I'm not trying to shift blame because clearly, the the error was made in the assessor's office.
It may come up again with somebody else who had issues two years ago or whatever and and didn't. I just wanna get it cleared up, that that's, that that's how we're going to operate, uh.
Yeah, but so, I mean, I I urge everybody to look at our website, you know? And a lot, a lot of the taxpayers do, they're pretty astute, as far as looking at up there and and checking all the information. And, um, we try to do that as well when people are at the window.
And, yeah, that that's another good thing that that I'm sure will be in your letter that they get in their hand when they file, is that they they, before they come to the protest, well before they come to the protest.
They will have a U L R link in that email.
Yeah, they need to review their information online and be sure that it's correct, as correct as possible. And if they have any thoughts or questions, get ahold of your office, right?
Down to the office that you're not going back and back taxing as you've not picked up something for two or three years also.
That's right, yeah, so, I mean, there there are certain cases where we can do a taxless correction, but it's kind of a case by case basis. A situation like this?
Like if that's a five hundred, two million dollar house, it's one year.
Here's a good for instance, Hilltop Estates wa- was annexed by the city a few years ago. And we identified the protests this last year that, wait a minute, it's still under a rural residential neighborhood code forty-five oh ones, okay? We changed all those this year, but I didn't go back, even though the values went up significantly, I didn't try to go back and recoup taxes for those people.
So it's equal both ways, so you're not picking it up, you're not taking it off.
So it goes both ways is what your, the point is. Um, and so I I knew that, uh, this, that we were gonna end up talking about this, and I guess we just as well finish that up if we can here in short order, hopefully. Mister Nimnik, um, you're here, if you wanna say something, I think we ought to do it now and just kinda get it done and over with.
I I think we answered your question, but you're you're certainly welcome to give.
Right, and let me just say, what I hope and what I think I heard, and my my hope in this issue, if I was dealing with it, is to say, we wanna do whatever the state statute says to do. And if it says to, um, Robert, uh, that, um, we're not able to do anything, then I think that's gonna be our stance, and we can confirm that with our own county attorney person to be sure that he agrees with that theory for the board's sake. But, um, if that's the way that we feel the state statute reads, then I I'm anticipating that's where we're gonna be. But anyway, you go ahead.
Well, uh, a- and and I understand a- all of that, that you gotta go by what the state statute. The biggest problem that we kinda had with this whole thing is. The biggest problem that we kinda had with this whole thing is we contacted there after we came to the protest and realized we couldn't just do the land. So we said, well, okay, that's all we wanted to do anyway, so we, we left. And you guys said, well, this is what we're gonna do, and you made the call of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand or whatever it was, okay? We then, after we came here, found, cause we've been trying to fix this for the last three years, that they finally fixed our square footage on our garage. And we went down and looked at the drawing, it's fine, we didn't think we had to go any farther than that. But what they did is they fixed that one, but they left the old one down at the bottom, and we didn't know, we had to scroll clear down the bottom and see, we had two garages now. Cause they never took the other one off when they fixed the square footage. So we called his office, and this was about the first part of August, and said, this is wrong, uh, you have two garages, we wanna take it. My wife was the one that called, Robert, and she talked to Robert, and Robert says, well, we're doing some other things right now, we will correct it later, probably in November. But he forgot to tell me, and maybe I'm supposed to know this, but I don't know how many you guys know, but August twenty-fourth is the last day you can make an appeal. If you don't make an appeal to that place he said.
Turk.
Turk, you can't make the appeal after that. Well, if his office would have said to us, I can't do anything with this right now, but if you, you have X amount of days yet to do an appeal, and then we'll take care of it on this appeal. That information was never given to me, I didn't know I had Aug- till August twenty-fourth, and when he said, I'll take care of it, or my wife, when he told my wife, I'll take care of it, we assumed it was gonna get taken care of, never did. And then, then after the fact now, we're past the August twenty-fourth date, and we never could appeal it. Because we didn't know we had to do it on that date.
So if, if all of that information is correct, then I still don't know what, um, uh, remedy, uh, so to speak, that, that you may have at this point. Um, because, uh, uh, but certainly, again, uh, Robert may have already talked to our, um, attorney person about this issue. He may have, I don't know who he's talked to to get information, that's kinda up to him, um, but if you think you have a-
I understand, you can't do anything.
Right, okay.
I understand that, I understand you cannot do anything.
You're just telling us what you think happened as far as-
Right now, I'm just telling you what happened, so you know how our communication was between the assessor's office and us.
Okay.
And it's frustrating to us that because of this error, we will pay eight hundred and eighty-five dollars more in taxes in twenty, when we pay our tax bill in twenty-five, four twenty-four, than we should have had to.
And, and you'd been paying on it, in my understanding, prior even to that?
Some, yeah, it, it ne- it never was two garages, it was just wrong square footage on our one garage we had. And we've been trying to fix this over the last two or three years, they just kept getting it wrong until they finally got it right for twenty-two or twenty-four on the main house, but we still have a garage on there that wasn't, shouldn't have been.
So you're paying the extra.
If you have a garage on there that isn't supposed to be on there. Correct.
So you have, you'd be in charge for garage.
I'm charged, charged for garage, and, and, and like he said, yes. It's up to me to have caught that, we didn't, but we shouldn't have had to have looked so closely for an error that was made. But anyway, the only thing I was saying, and they kinda committed to this, I just kinda feel as a board, that possibly when it comes time for protests next year, and our taxes come in, I'm just gonna round it, but come in at three hundred thousand, and we've overcharged four hundred, forty thousand for twenty-four, that possibly the board for one year could say, okay, your taxes are gonna be two sixty. And that gets my forty thousand dollar credit for next year that I overpaid this year. And I know that's kind of a, an ask, but that's kinda what I'm thinking would be.
I understand what you're saying.
The right thing to do.
I don't know that we aren't a little bit on dangerous ground doing that for, for you, and then.
Well.
Um, but I understand what you're asking for, but I'm not-
So anyway, that, that's the only thing that I would think could be a, a correct remedy.
All right.
I just wanted you to be aware of what transpired on us personally.
Oh.
That's costing us eight hundred and eighty-four, eighty-five dollars more.
Bob, your thoughts were going to Turk at one time, I mean, you, earlier you were considering-
We didn't know anything about it.
You didn't know anything about that.
Nobody told us, if, if, like I said, if the, if, when my wife called, had the assessor's office said to her, you can, you have until this date, cause we did it, we actually contacted the office early August, it was before that date came up. We would have done that, and we would have had it fixed, but nobody told us that.
Okay.
And maybe you guys need to, on, on your end, need to tell protesters, here's our decision. If you don't agree with it, you can file an appeal with Turk, and you have till August twenty-fourth. Which, which we do, we, we do that.
We normally say it verbally.
At, at the protest, yeah.
But it certainly, if, uh, Robert, weren't you saying that possibly we would be including that information in, uh?
In the additional, Scott, actually.
There's, it's on the back, it's on the back.
Yeah, I didn't disagree with what you think Mister Nimnik has just said, uh, in the fact that he contacted us in August, I would make him change prospectively. Uh, then on the back of the protest form.
Oh, yeah, it does say it right here, under appeals, the form that you filled out.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so there was some notice, but maybe not, um, exactly as, uh, as it could have been, and, um.
I mean, it could have been said on the phone that day.
That's what I'm talking about.
And I also, we went and looked at Bob, that there was a period within that office where there was some, a lot of confusion. Not everything was going the way that needed to happen, things fall through the cracks, and hopefully we're gonna get to the next field.
That's, oh, I wanted to just make you guys aware of what's going on.
Okay, appreciate you being here. Okay.
The only question that I would have, and I don't know how I have to, I don't wanna come and waste your time next year on appeal, but would I propose, do you think there would be any chance that would happen?
The, uh, I'm not-
You're asking us to vote on your, on your tip down?
No, I just, I just wanted an opinion whether I should now waste our time, and we're just out the other way.
I think the biggest thing you can do is come here and be sure that your first priority is to get your value at what you think your value really is, make sure you're doing that first. Then, if you wanna throw that out as a secondary side issue at the end, you can tell us that. Um, I, I think that throws us into a dangerous precedent, that all of a sudden, then we're gonna have a lot of people coming to ask for that. But I wanna be sure we get your stuff right, and I think that needs to be, okay, I, I think that's the thing, is let's, let's make sure that's done.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you guys for listening.
Thanks.
Drive safely.
Yeah, it's nasty, I know.
Unfortunate circumstance.
It happens.
It does.
I thought, okay. Okay, yeah, so we can keep going, okay.
No drama, yeah, no, okay, yeah, so, one of the things, and this isn't, I'm not like pointing fingers at the board, this is for my group, myself, the clerks, that we all just need to remember, you know, let's try to, yeah, that, that's a good example, thank you.
You're welcome.
It looked like that was planned, but it wasn't. That, rolling the eyes.
I'm not gonna stop.
Body language, for me.
I'm gonna roll my eyes at you.
And it's hard for me sometimes too, because some of the things that we, you know, talk about, I mean, um, it's difficult on me to say that. But just since I was putting this together, it's like, let's just, you know, talk about it, because it's something, and Siobhan and I talked about, and it's like, oh, we need to have better poker faces, uh, when we're doing this, um.
What are we gonna do with her?
I, you're, oh, yeah, you're gonna talk about it here in just a minute, that next item.
If we just get your sunglasses darkened.
Yep.
Yeah, anyway, just, just a probably a good thing to remind ourselves on, um, decisions, you know, again, I urge everybody to read that article fifteen, which covers the protests, I think it says it all right there. Um, and I know it's difficult, uh, to be in your seats and have very real circumstances come up, with people, financials, with hardships, with illness, um, uh, may, maybe there's business associate, associates or friends, um, that may put you in a tough position. But, um, just, just realize that, I'm sorry.
Go, go ahead, uh, back to Mitchell Golf Course and Boat Club, what, you use those as examples, can you expound on that a bit?
Yeah, so by the time we ended up with Mitchell Golf Course, it was a big joke, I think, uh, amongst some of the commissioners, and there were just random numbers being thrown out. And, uh, I thought that was highly inappropriate. I mean, there was similar lots that we, that there were devoted on safer ten thousand, and then there was like, you know, nine thousand.
Identical for four, and then identical for four.
Yeah, yeah, and then it's like nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, and, and then some other number, and, and it kinda, kinda lost track on some of that stuff.
There were, there were two type of lots, or there was outlying lots that you could drive to that had streets to them. And then there's lots with no access, and they're rough, and those are the ones that he was talking about, there was absolutely no access, and they're never gonna have access to them.
They all have roads to them.
Pardon me?
They all have roads to them.
Not the ones in the rough, they won't.
What he's referring to is right there at the end, we were, what was going on there, I don't even remember, but there was just some numbers thrown out there, like you said, willy nilly, so to speak.
Right.
And, um, yeah.
And it wasn't just one, it was, it was several.
We should've, um, maybe-
Cause one of them I brought back too, cause it was a three hundred fifty thousand dollar house that you guys would have lowered to five thousand dollars.
Right, because it had a house on it, and we didn't realize it at the time, because we were just kinda going through them real fast.
That's right.
Going through them late.
It was on the last day, I believe, or next to the last day, we were trying to get through them late in the evening, and, um, yeah.
I remember that now.
We, we should've been more careful than that, I remember.
So that's, that was the example.
Right.
And then, um, you know, on the, on the boat club, as, as an example, um, we all have, I think empathy for the fact that those values have skyrocketed over the number of years, but at the end of the day, I've got a job to do, and I gotta value those according to market value. And when we just tell those taxpayers out there every year that they're going to get a decrease, because the board doesn't believe that they should be that high, I think we're doing a disservice to everybody, that was another really good example.
We asked for a appraisal, they draw an appraisal, we accepted the appraisal, correct?
That's what it was, right, we did.
Um, yeah, I, I think that I disputed the appraisal, because of the format, it wasn't a standard, it wasn't a standard uniform appraisal, uh, form that a stand, a certified appraiser would use. If, if I was a certified appraiser and saw that, I mean, that would be embarrassing, I would think.
I don't remember who appraised it, but-
Certified appraiser.
That's what I understand.
Yeah.
But it was.
And you didn't agree with his appraisal?
No.
But he was certified, whoever the guy, I don't remember who it was, they just certified.
Logan, Logan Woodwork, was his name.
I think he's out of Colorado, I think he's more of like a high-end appraiser.
He's a what?
More of like a high-end appraiser.
But even, not only the property of the boat club, it's an example, it's the actual, hey, we all know, I mean, those properties out there, it can be a nineteen fifty eight by forty trailer with houses built all the way around it, and it's worth a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And it's worth a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, because you have a willing buyer and a willing seller. And for us to ignore, you know, the increases, um, to a certain degree, not in all cases, but to a certain degree, I think, I think that we should be careful.
I would agree on the ones that have sold, but I don't think we should be taxing on, betting on the come of those, because they may not bring them.
Yeah, as an assessor, I can't chase one sale, I have to look at all of them.
That seems what we're doing, that we wanna raise them all up to that two hundred thousand or a hundred and seventy-five thousand, all these trailer homes.
Well, I mean, if there's, I, I'm just guessing at the number, if there's eighty properties there, and there's ten sales, that's indicative of the market, and if you, if you are-
I'm assuming that's a neighborhood.
That's a neighborhood.
Not any different than if he had a neighborhood here, and he had ten houses that sold in the neighborhood, and they went up ten percent, the whole neighborhood would go up, right?
That's right.
But I don't think they've had four sales out there in the last two years, have they?
Uh, I didn't bring the list, that we had, we had three years' worth of sales last year, when we look at the rolling three years. I think that I quoted some of the numbers.
Yeah, you did.
And, and it was quite surprising.
You said that it was the highest in the county, percentage-wise.
Percentage-wise was the highest increase in the county.
But you're also talking about, and Mark, your example of we have a neighborhood. If you, if you got a neighborhood, most of those homes in that neighborhood are pretty much all the same, kind of, you would think, whatever.
Yeah.
I don't think we have that at the boat club.
We don't, well, we're buying, when I bought my, when I bought my cabin out there, I bought lake fringe, I wanted to use the lake. So I paid twenty thousand dollars more, so I could put my boat in and use the lake, I didn't buy it, cause this house is worth that much money, I bought the access to the lake.
You've got however many houses are out there, or how many places there are, that's how many different units that you have. And you cannot group that, you can't clump them all into one and say, this is what this stuff is worth, it's, it's, it's not fair to them.
Those houses need to be appraised back to like he appraised that garage, with what type of shingles it's got, what kind of siding it's got, what kind of floor it's got, and that's all it's worth.
Yeah.
Just cause I give twenty thousand or a hundred thousand more to use the lake, that's my business, the cabins only worth so much money.
Unfortunately, it does count.
Huh?
Unfortunately, it does count, cause if it's a good sale, it counts in our process.
But the guy down the street that's got that nineteen fifty single wide, that he happened to put a porch on or, or an addition.
They're there.
That they're there, they're there, that doesn't make it that much more expensive.
No.
Cause you're, you're, and, and that's been my argument with the boat club for twenty years. Sorry, I've been through twenty, twenty years of the boat club stuff going on, and it's just, it's just, I, I don't know.
And, and the, and, you know, I just, I bring this up, cause it is, it is, um, it's a difficult thing, cause nobody wants to raise somebody's valuation by forty percent in one year, but at the same time, if you disagree, you know, say you disagree with the process on master appraisal, that's how I have to do it. If you lower those values significantly, the next year, when I come back in, it might be that high, or it may, it's gonna be higher than what it would have been had we done the appropriate raises at the appropriate times.
Cause you're gonna start back up here.
That's right, so it might be a two percent or a three percent increase rather than forty, but I think, and I can't say this for a fact, because I haven't been here, that a lot of those values have been pushed down, pushed down, pushed down for years.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
It puts us in that situation.
Yeah, I know.
I just-
Well, the, no, it's, uh, you know, we have the boat club, and there's probably five or six others that are recurring argumentative subjects or places that come up, that, um, just, um, it's hard to put a handle on, and just to, um, to know what, um, what the value is, and I, uh, I guess, I don't have a particular, um, strong feeling either way on the boat club. I want it to be valued fairly, um, when we consider it to all the other property in the county, I want them to pay their fair share. Um, I don't want them to pay more than that, um, but to try and figure out again that value, and then we have the added complication of the ground itself that, that it's on, and how much is that worth? And that's a big argumentative subject, and, um, so it is difficult, at the very least, it is difficult, and we have a few other places, VIT lots and other things, that are difficult sometimes for us all to get our hands wrapped around and try and understand it.
Storage units.
What it's storage units, um, it's another place, and there are some difficult ones that we don't understand well. And, um, it's just really hard to, to put values on, so, and I realize that, and to the best extent, we need to know, you know, what, yeah, what you're thinking there, and you try and explain it to us, and, but, um, they're, they're tough, they're tough for us, anyway, being laypeople.
Bottom line is, we have to be objective, based on facts and information, and we have to make a great attempt to treat everybody equally, no matter what the neighborhood is.
Yeah, as fair as we can.
And we just have to do the best job we can.
Yeah.
And that word is exactly what it's about, is equalization. It's, and you, you, I've heard, I think each of you say this independently, it's not your job to really- And that works, exactly what it's about, is equalization, it's, and you, you, I've heard, I think each of you say this independently, it's not your job to, really to pull together the comparables, or to determine what you think it's worth, it's what it's worth based off of the sales study and the neighborhood reviews that we do, and are they being treated equitably among people within their valuation group?
And when you're doing neighborhoods, um, that in and of itself is hopefully what we would consider comparables, um, and so hopefully that's, that is part of what we're doing, um, and then they, um, certainly pick and choose some of those, and I know some of them get way outside their neighborhoods, and that's no, not always good either, but, and we might explain that a little bit in your note. Okay, keep going.
Okay, um, so if there's a conflict, I know there was at least one, maybe two times last year, that somebody recused themselves, always a good idea, when in doubt, recuse yourself, or abstain, whatever the appropriate terminology is, but, um, again, just the, the burden of proof is on the taxpayer at all times, um, mentioned already that field reviews during the hearing, we're gonna try to keep those two, during the hearings, keep those two a minimum, a lot of, a lot of balls in the air at that time, meals, and that just seems trivial, but there, it's an expensive endeavor.
I'm happy you brought it up, Robert.
And it, it takes a lot of time, because Charlotte did it the first week, Tracy and others, I think in my office, did it the second week, there's a lot of planning, a lot of going and getting food, planning for it, and the expense of it, so, just bring it up, for ideas.
Let me say what I, and Ken could chime in more, but we didn't used to do that, um, but we used to have enough time in our schedule to not have to go through, well, we didn't go through the noon hour, but we kept, I think, the noon hour just to thirty minutes, by bringing food in, and, um.
When?
But we used to be able to, we, yeah.
Recently? We used to break for like an hour and a half for lunch, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
That's what I think, cause we, we left, we went and ate somewhere.
If we didn't have that many night time.
Which wouldn't be a bad idea.
No, it wouldn't, if, the problem is, is if, if we have five hundred versus nine hundred.
Well, I'm gonna, I think, I recommend we treat you like poll workers, and you pack your lunch, they're expected to be there thirteen and a half hours a day, and take their lunch and their snacks, so, or arrange for somebody to bring you something.
Well, uh, uh, I think that.
I think that's a great recommendation.
I wonder if you guys live two blocks from here.
Well, I pack my lunch every day, I mean, I live twelve miles from here.
Right.
One of the big things is like, it costs a lot, like, I mean, we're talking thousands of dollars, and we're cutting budgets and everything like that, is it really fair to have food catered in once or twice a day for the board if everybody's budget gap has to?
Well, the, I guess, election day is what, one day, and we were here for thirteen days, for twelve hours a day.
Right.
It's a little, it's not really apples to apples.
We, we still need to eat lunch every day, whether we're in a protest hearing or not.
Right.
I agree, I agree, my recommendation for you guys' consideration, you guys make it your mind, I, I'd recommend brown bag it, and have, we can provide waters and, uh, coffee.
I was gonna say, don't forget the coffee.
Coffee, yes, coffee, waters and sodas, and I brought sodas in last year, um.
Whose budget wasn't coming out?
The, the snacks and the meals came out in general, uh, some of the stuff that I purchased, I just paid for, like a lot of the sodas and stuff just came out of my pocket, but, uh, when it was paid by the county, it came out in general.
I like the idea of brown bagging.
I don't like the idea of brown bagging.
I either do I.
I don't either.
I didn't wanna come here.
No, no, not even, not even.
We're providing a service, boys.
You know, it, it was a nice break to walk across the street to a restaurant for thirty minutes and get a bite to eat, or, and, and we did that for years.
But you can do that, when I say brown bag, I mean, just everybody on the road, yeah, you can go across the street.
I'll just take an hour and a half. Last year with nine hundred protests, we didn't have enough time to hardly go to the bathroom, and it, it was nice to be able to slip into this room, have something decent to eat,
That's what was good.
Yeah.
Instead of a tuna sandwich that I brought from home, that's not gonna happen.
A lot of times we're talking lunch and dinner.
That's right, well, most of it, most, most of those days with tuna.
And we, we can make sure that you have time, like, we can control that, to make sure that there's.
Yeah. But the other thing, yeah.
Because of that, yeah, you guys are, since you only have to have a forum, I mean.
We were splitting up, and, we were splitting up.
So we can be going through that whole time of.
No, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not packing lunch. Everybody in this room ate there, you guys all ate there, everyone ate there, it wasn't just the board that you're talking about, everyone, all of them ate there, there was nothing wrong, and I don't begrudge you guys eating meal, pardon me?
No, this is all of us. I'm not paying for yours.
It's just the visuals of it, to.
It's all fine.
The other department, I, I mean, we're gonna eat too, yeah, I, I don't have to bring my lunch either, but, we all have to sacrifice some this year.
I think if, um, we can be responsible, uh, and when we say that, meaning that nobody else has to order in food, um, and that if we want to walk across over here, or over there, if we figure an hour, or an hour and fifteen minutes at the most, and we can go do whatever, we can run home, we can do whatever.
Here's another thing.
We're on our own technically.
We can pick three restaurants, and they can rotate every day and bring us something different, and send us a bill at the end of the week, we don't have to, everybody have to go trucking, they'll do it for you, and they'll bring it right here and deliver to us.
I know they will.
Pick three or four places, and let's do it.
But somebody has to do that.
Okay, I have to pay for my own, but I'm, I don't, I don't be working. And it worked nice that we had it right here in this room, we didn't have to get in the car, drive somewhere, which takes another fifteen to twenty minutes. We ate in there ten minutes. There was several times, there was several times we got called out of there, because somebody else was, had to go somewhere else, we were called out of that. It was, it was real convenient, that we did that right in here.
And we kept on moving, we kept it rolling.
This table is disgusting.
Yeah, I don't know what the answer is on that.
I don't know either.
I have another thought too, cause we did get all that sandwich stuff, it would be cost effective to buy a bunch of, say picnic types of, like all kinds of sandwich stuff, chips, like, something that would last, you know, where you order one meal, and it's for one meal, you can't, you know, we don't have leftovers to offer, but we can also.
We can, we can, we can work that out as we get closer, that's.
If we, right, if we had one, uh, I know you guys had some pretty nice lunches, and then eat lighter maybe in the evening or something, uh, whatever.
We did, it was good.
I, I'm flexible, I'm not gonna complain to any of this, but, um, uh, I think in an effort to not require you guys to have to deal with it as much, is, um, I understand that, um, let us give it a little thought, and then maybe we can come up with something, okay?
Don't ask him.
We might let even, uh, a one person cater a person, take care of the whole deal.
That's right.
And then you can just do it that way, and just one, one outside person help take care of it, and bring the stuff in and put it here, and then they don't have to take care of it, and we don't either, and we can just, okay, we might think of that.
Yeah, and, I think we're gonna make it on time.
Good.
So, uh, the, the last, or the last two items, the board of equalization responsibilities, I attached that chapter seventy-seven, article fifteen, started to list out the assessor's office, and I said, that's way too much, I'm just attaching the statute, but, in general, some of the things, obviously, that are responsibility, review protest applications received, enter data into beacon scan to I can resolve issues in lieu of a hearing, if possible, conduct field reviews prior to hearing where needed, look for parcel combination solutions prior to hearing, and that's, okay, I'm just gonna, I could've done three pages of, of those items, but I'll let you read the statute.
That, uh, August twenty-fourth notification for Turk, can we put that on something when they leave here, that they have a handout on that, so they know that, we, we've tried our best to qualify.
It's, it's on the back of their protest.
It is, but that states here, but that doesn't go with them generally.
It doesn't, we give them a copy, they get a copy.
But they only, we copy the front, do we copy the back as well? I know we copy the front, but I bet we don't copy the back of it, so, I think we need to.
Well, you don't copy it into triplicate, innit?
A lot of times they're in, they've only submitted the front of it, if they got it offline, so it's not there.
Oh, if they got it offline.
Yeah.
So they don't see it anyway. Again, we're assuming that the consumer knows what they actually know.
Yeah, so, there's, there's a couple places where it's at right now, it's here, it's already on our website, so if you go in and look under protests, and protests and appeals, it's all on there, um, I was thinking about on our notice of valuation, uh, changes this year, there's, there's certain information on that form that's required by state statute, I believe that there's a window in that, that, uh, sheet of paper that we can send in, that I can freeform something, I can tell MIPS what to put in there, so, we could possibly do that as well.
That'd be great, as long as, as long as they have a handout of some sort, that they can't come in here and say, well, we didn't know that.
Right, right, and so, uh, and, and my point to it, I was, I would much rather them know about that before they come to the protest, not when they're walking out. I'd like for them to know that ahead of time.
That's probably smart.
I have no issue with that, yeah.
Because it may change how they present their case.
Yeah, but I think we're gonna serve it up numerous ways, so.
Right.
In person when they're down there, in person when they come through the door, it's on the website, now, if we could put it on evaluation notice too, three or four ways, yeah, I like that. Yeah.
Good.
Sounds good.
That's the things I had, and I'm sure you guys have some things.
I, I just wanna reiterate what I mentioned earlier, if we can handle it downstairs, do it, get it done, get it done, it, it, it isn't just a, I don't know the answers, we just go to a protest, well, then that just keeps adding up, and all of a sudden, we're up to nine hundred again, and I, I don't want.
It's pretty new.
I think, I think what we're gonna see.
And I, I fully understand that, I think we're gonna see a lot of this year.
You know, we had that with nobody carrying over from our last assessor's office, we had everybody had a new one, didn't know what our expectation.
I think what you'll see this year, which is what I'm hoping and what I'm envisioning, is that we'll have our staff at the window, and, um, trained appropriately for to handle the protests, we've already talked some about it, but where we identify those items, have myself, Steve and Siobhan able to take the, bring those people into our office, sit down and go through their information, and events, so.
And you've already identified several things here at the very bottom of the page, that you're gonna do to try and help eliminate some of the protests.
That's right.
And that'll, that's, um, helpful, let me look at, uh, so, I think one of the things that's important to us is that commissioner letter that, um, gets handed out by Kelly's office when they file, um, can we be sure, number one, that, um, uh, I would only say, if there's any input on that letter, that you guys might want to see to be changed, um, that you could give us input, and then if we can look at that early on,
Yeah.
and see if there's anything else that we want to say, um.
Yeah, last year.
Let's be sure and review it.
I think if I remember correctly, that I took the word document, cause I was already trying to find the, the letter heading to the board, um, took the existing document, sent it to the board, and I, I don't recall if there are any changes, I can't wait with what it was.
My biggest issue is, when we're in protest time, I don't want us to say, well, we didn't know that it said that, or we thought it said this.
Sure.
I want this group to be able to say, I saw it, I voiced my opinion, uh, we made a change, and it's in there, and I just don't want us to be saying.
So, do we need to?
Question or answer?
Do we need to do this in a meeting, so that we can do a roll call, or can we get you to respond to an email, so we have in writing that you approved the commissioner letter?
I think you should email it to us.
But we need a response.
Right, and that, then we need to read through it, and give our thoughts and opinions, and then, um, agree to those, cause if just one person has it, um, we gotta make sure it's a, a, a vote of the group, and then have it finalized, and then we can vote on it here, once it's finalized.
Right. We can have it as an agenda item someday too, yeah.
Right.
And then, the radio and the newspaper could pick that up.
Right.
Prior to protest, we have an article about, uh, what are you gonna do when you protest, highlight those items, so, it's, it's, we saturate as much as you possibly can.
Make it palatable, so they understand.
And you're already talking about kind of a letter from the assessor, or the assessor's office, there might even be some information from the, um, clerk's office, I don't know, but if we can give them that information, that'd be great, but I just want us to be absolutely sure, that we had the opportunity, and that we can't say at the end, hey, why didn't that say this, or I didn't know it said that. I just want us to be sure and do it, I know we kinda had the opportunity before.
You, your office has always been in charge of.
I said that last year.
Uh huh.
I'll, I'll be the one sending it, so if I send you any.
Okay, we'll watch for it.
The copy us, please.
I will, absolutely.
Um.
And if you guys think of other things, I know we're short on time, but if you think of other things, I have no problem reconvening at another later date to talk about other things.
Um, I got a couple things I think we can get through the process, you went through it well, I think, uh, that's good with me, that check-in is great out there, um, the field reviews limit that, um, and what can they bring to help, I love that, and then my only other issue, that, um, you know, that, um, I wanna come to your office sometime and talk about, and that's lot values, that, you know, we had, uh, um, concerns last year on several, and, but I think that's best done with you and I face to face across from you.
And this is a good time of year, and I'll tell you why, I have to set values on March nineteenth, so, we, we're like all busy beavers down there, finishing our neighborhood reviews, getting our sales put in, uh, looking at, uh, the sales study, I've already got an initial blush of that, I'm gonna run what's called an AVU probably early next week, then I'll get data back from the state, and I think I mentioned to the board that we have this very cool tool, on what-if scenarios, that if we're below value in neighborhood by eight percent, what you can do as far as adding value to land, or to improvements, and being, you know, conscious of the fact that we really don't wanna change much land this year unless we need to.
I would highly suggest that you don't.
There are some neighborhoods that we didn't touch last year, that we, that, uh, we may need to this year, because there's a significant increase in those neighborhoods, um, one of the neighborhoods, I think, is in the neighborhood up where you live.
Well, I know, I didn't have any increase, I know that.
Last year, but I think this year, are you in nineteen hundred, or? There's one of those neighborhoods up there I looked at, it was like, yeah, we're probably gonna have to do it.
I don't know which one that is.
But that would be very targeted at this point, cause the majority of everybody got a lot, lot increase last year.
And that, that one subdivision you were talking about, is that one up by, that Hunter Head, right under Cosman?
That's right, we got, uh, matter of fact, I finished that up this weekend, getting all those moved from rural residential, we set up a, a new neighborhood code specifically for Hilltop, and I did that because we would be forcing in new builds into an older type neighborhood, and I don't think that was the right thing to do, so I just set up a new code.
Well, I need to come in and talk to you about lots, and some thoughts I have on lots.
Just let me know.
Okay, I'll do that.
Always willing.
Okay, anything else, guys, Russ, did you have anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Anything else from anybody?
One, one thing I, I do wanna tell the board real quick, though, my staff has been amazing, um, and they're doing, they're picking up this, uh, the slack on, on things, and, uh, really helping out, mapping is, 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 uh, assisting greatly on some tax district things that we're working on, my people are picking up things, and I think that this pro- this process this year will be, uh, a lot smoother than it was last year, but, uh, it's not necessarily because of me, it's because of the wonderful staff that I have, so.
Good.
Yeah, they're doing a great job.
All right.
I agree.
Well, we appreciate all your, uh, work from all offices, and, um, anything else that we have? All right, if not, meeting's adjourned. You've got to know, he's, I didn't know after the break situation.
We're gonna go for a record, uh, short meeting?
Well, I, I would think it would be short.